Good evening. This is the meeting of the March tenth Planning Board. This meeting has been duly advertised according to section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter two thirty-one, public law nineteen seventy-five, Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peason?
Here.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Conner?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessag?
Here.
Ms. Becarina?
Here.
Ms. Forrest?
Here.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruley?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Here.
Mayor Delkor?
Here.
And Chairman Lapdine?
Here. First or business be the deposition of minutes dated November nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. They're in your packet.
Mr. Chairman, the eligible members are the mayor, Dr. Maruley, Mr. Conner, Mr. Wagner, and yourself.
We have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second. Roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Julian?
Yes.
You were absent.
Yeah, I was absent.
I want you to apologize.
Had to rub it in, huh?
Mr. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Let's see. Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruley?
Yes.
And Chairman Lapdine?
Yes.
Okay.
Next would be the minutes dated December third, two thousand fifteen.
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman or the mayor, Dr. Maruley, Mr. Julian this time, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, and the chair.
Do you entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Lapdine?
Yes.
Chairman Lapdine?
Yes. Thank you. The rest is going to be easy from now on, I promise.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay, so next on our deposition resolutions, we have a resolution of memorialization endorsing improvements to the Hillsborough Township Middle School and High School as presented to the board and for review and recommendation pursuant to NJSA forty fifty-five D thirty-one.
Which I believe passed last night.
Which I believe, yes, correct.
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman or yourself, Dr. Maruley, the mayor, Mr. Julian, and Mr. Peason.
Motion?
So moved.
I'll second it, since we're short people. Go ahead, Lucille.
Yes, Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruley?
Yes.
Chairman Lapdine?
Yes.
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman or yourself, Dr. Maruley, the mayor, Mr. Julian, and Mr. Peason.
Motion?
So moved.
I'll second it, since we're short people. Go ahead, Lucille.
Yes, Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Chairman Lapdine?
Yes. And last is Westerly Place, FKA Amwell Commons RPM Development LLC, file fifteen PB oh-nine MS RV slash SR.
All members of the board except Ms. Becarina and Ms. Forrest.
Motion?
Make motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And second. And roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessag?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Chairman Lapdine?
Yes. And last of the little things, we have a planning board business, Glenn Gary, GGR Company, extension of time through April thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
This will allow Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for Glenn Gary to potentially come before the board in early April.
Okay. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And would you roll call on that? Yep.
Okay. Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessag?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Chairman Lapdine?
Yes. Next would be the resolution of the Hillsborough Township Planning Board, recommendation of a two thousand sixteen capital budget to the township committee.
All members of the board present, Mr. Chairman, except Mr. Julian and Mr. Conner.
Okay, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessag?
Yes.
Ms. Becarina?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Chairman Lapdine?
Yes. And last is Westerly Place, FKA Amwell Commons RPM Development LLC, file fifteen PB oh-nine MS RV slash SR.
All members of the board except Ms. Becarina and Ms. Forrest.
Motion?
Make motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
And second. And roll call.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessag?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Chairman Lapdine?
Yes. All right, last of the little things, we have a planning board business, Glenn Gary, GGRE Company, extension of time through April thirtieth, two thousand sixteen.
This will allow Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for Glenn Gary to potentially come before the board in early April.
Okay. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. And would you roll call on that? Yep.
Okay. Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessag?
Yes.
Ms. Becarina?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruley?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Mayor Delkor?
Yes.
Chairman Lapdine?
Yes. Special committee reports, any? Okay, seeing none. Any business from the floor not on the agenda for today? Seeing none. Consideration of ordinances?
Mr. Chairman, before you go into the, I've been made privy that a couple of members of the board may have issues with an application involving the applicant. However, this is an informal. And because it is an informal this time, because no action will be taken, and because no action may be ever be taken, depending on how you beat them up tonight, I believe that any conflicts, at least for the moment, are not at issue because it is an informal. I would, however, advise those members who may feel there is one, if and when an application does come before the board, we need to talk at the time.
Thank you. Noted.
Now a motion to adjourn.
Now a motion to adjourn. All right, next up will be public hearing, subdivision site plan, plan application for Neil and Barbara Van Cleef, HRC Associates LLC, file sixteen PB oh-one INF block one ninety-nine, lot thirty-four dot oh-one and one forty-five. Address submitted thirty dash forty, Brower Lane. Informal review for construction of a new two-story office building fronting Brower Lane on lot thirty-four dot oh-one A, four thousand four hundred and fifty square foot addition to an existing office building on lot thirty-four dot oh-one. Roof over existing tennis court at the rear of lot thirty-four dot oh-one. Five thousand here and thirteen square foot addition on the Brower Lane side of the Health Club slash Fitness Center on lot one forty-five, and revise parking and circulation for properties within the C, GC Gateway C zoning district and within the ASD overlay district. Yours, Mr. Hyble.
Mr. Hyble, you know the rules of engagement.
It's on. Okay, good.
This is an informal, as Mr. Bernstein said. It's in the newly created Gateway C zone that the board and the township committee adopted mid-two thousand and fifteen. It involves two lots, and the property is, this is the former alignment of Amwell Road, now called Brower Lane. This is Royce Field, the traffic signal is right there. And then you come in off of Service Road, which is that little stub, and then into this complex. The Westerly portion, there's a lot line that ziggs back and forth, houses, and this is the lighter brown color, the current Hillsborough Racquet Club and Fitness Club. In the next building, as I go to the east, is a proposed office building, and I'll get back to that. Going counterclockwise is the existing Country Classics Office Building. For that, we have Todd Van Cleef, who's representing Country Classics. This is a family matter, as you'll see in a minute. And I skipped, actually, Greg Wilke, who is the son-in-law of Neil Van Cleef, who is the owner of HRC, which is Hillsborough Racquet Club. Then you have the Rails Edge Office Building, that's there. We're not proposing to do anything with that building. Then you have a garage, which houses a one-bedroom apartment over that. We're not proposing to do anything with that. And where I've resided for the last forty years, at least most of the day, at Van Cleef Engineering, which we're not proposing to do anything with in this application. The darker brown represents an extension, a proposed extension of five thousand eight hundred feet approximately, for the Hillsborough Racquet Club. And I'm going to have Greg Wilke speak to this in a minute, as to what the proposal is and why this is needed. Once again, going counterclockwise is a proposed two-story office building that Neil Van Cleef would like to build on the property. And then we have the Country Classics, the existing, and Todd Van Cleef will explain why they need a forty-four hundred square foot extension to the north and away from Brower Lane. There's a couple uniqueness about this. This is all, this is actually two lots, once again, but the facilities here are all intermingled. The employees of the racquetball club, I see them every day, they walk, they park on the other side over here, and then they walk across and they go in the racquetball building. The same thing for all of these buildings. Once again, this is all family-controlled, and all of these buildings exist on the same property harmoniously. And as you're going to see, even one of the facilities that's currently on the property, it says tennis court. In actuality, it was a former tennis court. The lines are still there, and they're fading, but it's not being used as a tennis court. This wants to be used, and Greg Wilke will speak to this, he wants to put a roof over the existing tennis court. Right now, if you were to go out there, there's weights and some tires on the top of the former tennis court, and he'll explain exactly what the proposal is in that regard. There's currently a hundred and forty-eight parking spaces on the property. The lighter represents the existing driveways and the existing parking. The darker gray represents another one hundred parking spaces. So, once again, this is not the formal site plan, but if we come before the board, we would come back with a total of two hundred and forty-eight parking spaces, which, if you look at each of the uses for the entire property, is the required number of parking spaces. This zone would allow up to some eighty-five percent impervious surface, so at no point are we even close to the allowable coverage, but we would have to come back with the appropriate engineering plans and stormwater control, as Mr. White wrote in his report, for all the aspects of the new impervious surface coverage. A couple uniqueness about the zone. When the township created the zone, they took, you took, some of the standards from the town center zone. One of those standards happens to be that the minimum setback, front yard setback, is zero feet. And the maximum front yard setback is ten feet. In this regard, we have the existing racquetball club, and that got built in about, Neil, about nineteen eighty-seven?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years ago. And it's about forty-nine feet from Royce Brook Road, and about a hundred feet back from what was the former Amwell Road. For all intents purposes, when the county and the state came by and they rebuilt Amwell Road, and I watched the traffic light move, this is the third location of the traffic signal. They then created Brower Lane, they gave us a new name about two years ago, and they put the bubble of the cul-de-sac in. So although it's still a county right-of-way and a county road, for all intents purposes, it's a driveway to this complex. The only people that actually use it, in my opinion, and I'd look right out the window, is people that are coming in either for the racquetball facility, for our office, or for Country Classics usually, except there's a driver ed teacher that's out there almost every day teaching the kids how to drive in the bulb of the cul-de-sac. Other than that, the only time I see anything being used is by the county, and that's when it snows, and they come in and they put their equipment in there temporarily, and they kind of just stack it in there. So although it's still a county road, and the county wants to keep the right-of-way, we actually went to the county to request in case they didn't want the road anymore, maybe they didn't want to maintain it, but they do. It's effectively our driveway coming off of the intersection of Royce Brook. On the east of the property is an active railroad. It's been active all these years, it still is active. So what we have is the former Amwell Road on the south, we have a railroad on the east, and then we have residential dwellings that are on the northerly side, and then we have Royce Brook Road and residential dwellings on the westerly side of Royce Brook. So although the ordinance has a maximum of ten feet, the proposal is to move, for the racquetball club, is to move it closer with the addition going towards the former Amwell Road, but that would require a bulk variance. In order not to, we'd have to extend that building all the way out to the existing right-of-way of the former Amwell Road. Same thing for the Country Classics building, that's back something like a hundred and eighteen feet currently off of there. The proposed extension is on the northerly side, so the building's not getting any closer to the road, but we're extending on the other side. The third building is the one that's not currently there, and that's the proposed two-story office building. We propose that that would be sort of in alignment with the other buildings that are currently there. Could that building be closer to the former Amwell Road? Yes, I could take the building and put it there and flip-flop that in the parking. I probably would never bring it as close as ten feet, but I could probably put it like twenty-five feet. It would still require a bulk variance, but we believe the location of the proposed office building is harmonious with the other buildings that are existing on the property, and they would work well with the traffic club. The other portion of the ordinance that was brought over from the town center zone was that any singular building cannot cover more than twenty thousand square feet of ground floor coverage. The existing racquetball club happens to be nineteen thousand and change. So when we add the five thousand eight hundred, this building would now have a building coverage of twenty-five thousand square feet. That's a bulk variance, and if we were to abide by that standard, there could be no expansion of the racquetball club whatsoever. The other variances happen to be at the northern portion of the property. There's a twenty-five-foot buffer that's required. The existing parking happens to be less than that, it's about ten feet less than that. It's been there, it's been there since I've been there, since nineteen seventy-six. It actually predates the houses. So these houses have occupied that space in proximity to either the tennis court or the existing parking all these years, but you do have a new zone, and that does violate the twenty-five-foot wide buffer standards. Certainly, when we came back, we'd look at enhancing the existing landscaping and perhaps putting some types of fences or hedgerows up to help that out. So at this point, Greg, if you could just speak to why you need to expand the racquetball club?
Good evening. Name, spell your last name for the record.
Greg Wilke. I am the owner, along with my wife, of HRC Fitness, the old racquet club. We purchased it in two thousand and twelve. We've been doing very well, and at this point, we are in need of additional space to accommodate comfortably our membership. What I'm looking to do is to expand the building, put a new lobby for the dance company, and I'll get back to that in a second, and also an additional fitness studio and additional dance studio. Currently, on the north side, is the facility entrance from the parking lot, and right there. And it's just getting very, very crowded, and kids are, you know, going to the parking lot. What I want to do is to try to separate the club entrance from the dance entrance. So what I'm looking to do is to essentially have the martial arts and the health club enter from the parking lot from the north, and then build the expansion on the south side, and that's where the dance families would enter the building. They would enter into a nice lobby and take dance from there. So that's, thank you.
Greg, can you tell us why you want to put a roof on top of the former tennis court?
The other thing that's becoming very big in the industry is just working out outside. So what I've done last year, several of my personal trainers, they take their clients out onto this former tennis court, and you've seen it, you might be doing it yourselves, but they flip the tires and, you know, do the ropes and stuff like that. They do that on the tennis court. We do have one group fitness class on Thursday evenings, I believe at seven o'clock, that's out there, and it's just in a group setting, and they do the same thing. I'd like to add the roof over top so that we can obviously do this, you know, three seasons a year with the weather protection.
Todd, if you could come up, this is Todd Van Cleef again. Can you tell us why you need or want to expand the Country Classics Office Building?
Good evening. Presently, that's Country Classics's main offices, where we house all of our administrative staff, the main offices are there. What we propose to do is a design selection center, where buyers would come in, we would have displays for them, and they would make their selections there. Presently, on our individual sites, we either house selection centers and model basements or garages. This would give us the ability to have one central location to bring people in, to make their selections. Many of our competitors, the Kaplins, the Toll Brothers, they work under this model, and it would be a big benefit for us if we had one place for them to come.
And I could introduce you to Neil, but effectively, he'd like to put a two-story office building, about thirty-eight hundred square feet per floor, seven thousand six hundred. The ultimate tenant to that office building, we don't know at this point in time, but it's not an expansion of Van Cleef Engineering, or Country Classics, it would be a new office building entity onto the property. And the ordinance, and we would have come here anyway for a concept plan, but your new ordinance actually requires the applicant to come to the board. I think we're probably the first entity that's come before the board in this zone. The rest of the zone, by the way, this portion is in the GC, and then you go back to the single-family there, you go across the public land, and then you have the alignment of Amwell Road. So the rest of the GC zone is actually on the opposite side of Amwell Road. So this is the only property in this zone that happens to be on the north side of the former Amwell Road.
Any questions from the board?
Just a couple, Mr. Chairman. Bob, is there any areas of disturbance on any to build outs? Any areas of disturbance on any of the build outs, you know, wetlands or?
Well, we don't have an LOI, but I will tell you that where we're doing, it can rain, you can walk there, and there's no water there. There is an old, when I got there, there's an existing detention basin that's in that location. That was done prior to nineteen seventy-six, probably doesn't meet any of today's storm water. We're not going to utilize that for any expansion. So any of the new impervious surface, we're going to do in accordance with today's regulations. And we're not going to go back and try to prove that the old thing works. It works, but it doesn't work in today.
Okay. You're going to upgrade all the storm water?
Yes, we are.
And the twenty thousand square foot, that triggers like additional storm water requirements, right?
Well, anything over one acre of disturbance was along the way, but now it's also a quarter acre, so we're certainly over the quarter acre.
Okay. So you're going to address that?
Yes, yes. When we come back for site plan approval.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Neil?
The additional parking is more than what you need? I mean, it's ample for the additional expansion that you've got, especially for the fitness center?
It's ample. Once again, it's a shared parking situation, Frank. If you were to look at just the racquetball club, there aren't enough parking spaces within the staggered lot line for the racquetball club. So if we didn't have this situation where we had a family operation and cross easements, et cetera, then the answer would be, on that particular lot, there would be not enough parking spaces. But the way it works is that we share the parking. Actually, they share it more than we share it. We don't have enough employees in the engineering business anymore, but it works, it's adequate parking. I've never seen, now there's, some people may have gone out there, and this is a human nature type of situation, Greg and I have talked about this, there's adequate parking. And for some reason, and these are people that are going to the racquetball club, they actually park illegally behind another vehicle because they don't want to walk the extra forty, fifty feet. That always, exactly.
It don't work out, they don't want to hurt themselves.
I always wonder about that, but that, so we have adequate, it's controlling the people that come there that it's a part of the problem.
And there's no, the way it's designed, there's no issue with any kind of emergency vehicles flowing through, or especially in the new parking area?
No. Oh, I didn't point out, one of the things that we are going to do, it's in that reference, the bulb of the cul-de-sac is there. Right now, the lighter tan is the existing driveway for the Country Classic parking. We're actually going to extend that out a little bit, so we have another, actually, connection for fire purposes.
Thank you.
Bob, the existing HRC, you said is about how many square feet? I think you said it was under thirty, or?
Nineteen and change, you said.
It was under twenty.
Well, that's actually, that's the building coverage.
Oh, the floor issue.
On the plan, it said thirty-one thousand?
Thirty-seven, right. The existing one is thirty-one thousand.
Okay.
What he's proposing to do, and we've done this with two other courts over the last seven or eight years, because racquetball is not what it used to be, we actually internally put a floor in, so the two-story racquetball facility is no longer, and then he puts a dance facility. So we pick up eight hundred square feet. So the existing thirty-one goes to thirty-one eight, and then you take the fifty-eight hundred square foot expansion. So the building would be thirty-seven thousand. There is no FAR requirements in the new Gateway C zone, only the building coverage.
Okay. And then also, Mr. White had a memo, I guess he's not here, did you have a chance to look about trees and?
Yes, we will do all the engineering requirements when we come back for site plan. So we haven't done any of that, we're just here on a concept. There are some trees that, for the parking facilities, and we will comply with all the mitigation, for tree mitigation for the township ordinances.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
You have any idea how high this roof is going to be over the tennis courts?
It's about fourteen to fifteen feet, and if you would have asked- And if you would have asked me this morning, I didn't know the answer. Dave Maskey asked me, so I had Dave, I had Greg Wilkie research that, and that's what he told me a half hour ago.
And what, what type of material is you planning for that roof? Just curious.
We would just be looking at a, like a galvanized steel roof, something you would find at a park.
Okay.
Just a pavilion, you know, with open sides.
Understood.
Yeah, just for confirmation on that point, because I had, had the same reaction perhaps. You're not putting a roof over the tennis court so people can play tennis there?
No.
In other words, it's not that high. It's going to be more like a, just a shelter, open, open on four sides?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Do you know, is it going to be lit for at night?
We, we would do lighting, yes.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a piece of information that I came up with after I issued my report. There is a historic house on the site, the Wyckoff House. Mr. Hyboll, maybe you can point it out. It's not impacted, apparently, towards the back.
That is what I refer to as the Rails Edge Building.
Okay. The only thing being, we would have to just refer this to the Stark Preservation Commission, just for comments. Thank you.
We've preserved that house over the years.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the inventory actually says it's in excellent shape, so. Just, just for clarification, nothing you're doing is, is changing that house in any way, right? Right, okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, one question. It looks like Royce Brook Road is more of a residential road, at least on the other side, the west side?
Yes.
And I think that's where the main entrance is right now, where a lot of cars, I guess, go through.
Yes.
So with all the additional parking on the west side, will that kind of redistribute the traffic and take a lot of those cars away and kind of have them go through the other, delve into the other side?
Yes, this is the, this is the entrance to the racquetball. So the majority go here, although some cars are used to it, and they actually come in our, our common driveway, and they come in off of here. But this will redistribute some of the parking. Actually, this row of parking over here and some of this will be utilized by the racquetball club.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion open to public?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this point, we'll open to public comment on the testimony given to this point. You can come forward and ask any questions you can. We'll start with here, on the left. Since he's already here.
Just jump right up there.
Is that a name?
Roof over the tennis court has been-
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
You need to speak into the mic.
And give your name first and address. Okay.
George Marias. The roof over the tennis court, have you considered putting a solar array on top of that?
I have not.
That's what a lot of people do with, when they build stuff.
Yes, it's actually a great idea. I'll, I'll look into it, yeah? Absolutely.
Okay. In the back, come on up. Take the microphone, say your name, please, for the record, and address.
My name is Linda Couch. I live at 16 Rails Edge Road. Our property backs onto where the tennis court is.
Okay.
Okay, so first of all, you know, we, we asked, and they built a fence behind our property two years ago, when they started doing the exercise back there. It does not count, stop the noise. I can hear it flipping tires. In my house, with the windows closed, they were out there the last two nights at 8:30. The idea of a 14-foot fence on top of that, which is literally feet from my back property line, you know, is very disturbing, especially metal roof, which is going to have the noise from the rain. I would want to have some type of drainage study done, because I can tell you, we lived in the house for 23 years now. Since you built on the last extension to the racquetball club, assuming the drainage in our property, we happen to heavy rain, have a stream between our property and the property next to us. But, I mean, this is, I, I hate to think of what this is doing to the property values all around us by building this in our backyards. And I don't understand why we weren't even notified about this.
Oh, the attorney, just while it wasn't-
I can actually answer. This is only a concept only, it's informal. No notice was required. If we go forward with the application, we'll do all the engineering, all the plans, and then there will be public notice to all the residents within 200 feet.
But what, what option do we have for our property values and our quality of life if something like this, which totally changes, you know, the, the whole neighborhood, is built in our, literally in my backyard?
Ma'am, I'm sorry, could you please use the microphone when you're speaking? Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry. But I'm, I'm saying, what options do we have as residents of Hillsborough for many years to have this built in our backyards? And what is it doing to our property values? I mean, this is great for their business, but it's certainly not helping any of us property va, you know, property value and quality of life. I mean, this is very disturbing right now with the amount of noise. I can only imagine what's going to happen when I have a 14-foot roof, now that it's going to be over that. There's trees on our property, what are you going to do? Cut those down so you can build this roof now? I mean, it's very disturbing.
Thank you.
Hi, Maureen Rizzo, 8 Rails Edge Road. I've been a resident for 27 years. I'm the house with the swimming pool in the back. I have no problems with the plan. I just have some questions, if that's okay. Is there any way the entrance, entrance and exit are, are supposed to be closed? Are given some thought to that?
Is that mic on? Can you test and see if that's on?
We haven't given any thought to it. We were adding another access onto Brower Lane in order to have the traffic be able to come in there. I'll discuss it with Mr. Wilkie, right?
Also, with the dance in the front, the kids get dropped off and picked up. Will that be their access from the, from the front, then? They'll be lined of cars in the front?
Please speak. You need the microphone.
With, with the, the entrance in the front, yes. I, I would anticipate that parents would drop off their kids on Brower Lane, they would walk in from the south into the, into the new addition. Yes.
So they would go like down the cul-de-sacs, come around, drop off and run into the building?
That's, yes, that's, I mean, part of the reason why I would like, I would like to do this addition is to keep a lot of those cars off of Royce, Royce Brook, out of the parking lot. Keep them on Brower, have them head down from Service Road, Brower, turn in the cul-de-sac, drop off their kid, and, and head back to, to Amwell, without even having to go on to Royce Brook and, and into the parking lot.
With that, sorry, just so I understand, the, the, how close is the entrance of that, of the, the new dance entrance to the, to the road? How close would that be?
Fifty feet.
Okay. Got it all?
And I just, in the green area where the old retention is, it does collect water.
Yes.
Okay. And I would appreciate greenery, like you said, in the land. Thank you.
Okay. Next. State your name and address.
William Couch, at 16 Rails Edge Road. My wife was just up here. I'm actually a member of the racquetball club. I do go over there. I can tell you right now, during the peak times, any time from, say, 5:30 on in the evening, during the, say, Monday through Thursday, that parking lot is jammed. Not only do you have people who are trying to use the facility, but you've got people who are waiting to pick up their kids. You know, they just, they just sort of park there by the front. It's hard to get in, it's hard to get out. And, and yes, there, there's been shared parking there for years. It doesn't seem to be making much of a difference. And, you know, if they, they still use that front parking lot, having an exit at the rear of the building is going to help, okay? It's just going to make them wait longer where they used to wait. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to be even, even crazier. I mean, they, they, occasion, you will see along that north lot, right, the parking by the retention pond. They do use that begrudgingly. And they do use the parking just to the east of, of that major north parking lot. That being said, it's still a traffic jam, so. And, and, you know, the concept of using Brower as sort of an in-and-out parking lot, public parking lot, I don't, I don't see that really being a solution to this. So I think that you're still going to have lots of problems. The other thing is, if I want to go home, I turn down Royce Brook, then, and, and if it's in the evening, say, 6:30, 7 o'clock, and both my wife and I have experienced it, we're headed down there, and the presumption of a lot of people are exiting from the racquetball club is that we're going to the club. So they're going to start out anyway, regardless of whether people have lived back there or not. So there have been one or two close calls. So that, those are the comments I like to make.
I was wondering if you were going to come up.
Of course.
Actually, Susan promised that she'd ask a question as I came in with her.
Susan Gulliford-Hunt Club Road. What's the sizes of the two, the acreage?
Use the microphone.
What was it?
Please.
The racquetball lot is 2.97 acres, and the other one is 6.29. So totally, it's about a total of nine and a quarter acres.
The 100 parking space increase, how much of the increase is as a result of the racquetball expansion? And how much is in, for, in employees? How many more employees do you think you're going to have as a result of extending the offices?
I would, what we are going to do, hopefully, is to put in a dance studio and a fitness studio. So that would be, you know, one or two additional fitness instructors, maybe two or three, and then, and then an additional dance instructor.
For Country Classics, we already have a person who fills the role of selection center. So we're talking maybe one, possibly a second employee with, with the addition.
Yeah, there, Susan, we don't know, obviously, who the tenants might be. But the number of parking spaces for an office building is three per thousand square feet. So you've got seven, so you've got about 23, 24 spaces for the office building.
Okay, I didn't realize this was going to be tenants. I thought you were expanding the engineering firm.
No, I'm sorry. We are not expanding the engineering firm.
Okay, the Country Classics' main office, the Design Selection Center. On the off chance that Country Classics is ever finished, which is sort of like hoping the bypass will be finished, when, what would happen to that building at that time?
Well, besides Hillsborough Township, Country Classics builds houses in other communities besides Hillsborough. So although the development in Hillsborough will ultimately finish, they, they still have their other places. As an example, they're currently building two different residential subdivisions, Todd in Montgomery. You have a job that's completed in Reddington. You built one in actually Pennsylvania also.
And he has, and he has a job in Bridgewater.
So buyers in all of these developments will be coming here to do their choices from-
Correct. Last, we act as a public-
Use that mic right there.
We historically average anywhere from 40 to 60 closings a year. So it's not a huge, it's not hundreds and hundreds of customers.
I was going to ask about changing or adding the driveways, because I've also run into that coming out when I was a member there, which one neighbor already brought up. And that's it, thank you.
With, with that, Bob, just so I'm clear, is, especially in the little cul-de-sac area, is it, is the flow there clear, or does it make sense to ensure that there's a very clear methodology about how cars come in, rotate back around, and then whether they're picking up or dropping off, so that, one, nobody's going across Broward? And I'm, I'm just not familiar with the, the cul-de-sac, so I'm just wondering if that's clear. And if it's not, can we ensure that it's, whether it's marked or arrowed or-
Yes, we'll-
Or create a, something in the circle so-
We're going to include more of that type of detail-
Okay.
-for the site plan.
Enter from the south. Exit from the north.
So, so Bob, maybe like recommendations in terms of the surface where you're flipping tires? You know, a lot of the gyms now have this rubberized mat, muff, kind of muffles the sound, maybe consider that, or muffling some type of noise in the roof and maybe addressing those stormwater controls in the back where the river is.
I, I had anticipated that, of all the operations, that might be the one that we might get the most comments on, so.
Right.
This doesn't surprise me.
Considerations.
Yes, absolutely.
Also, Bob, one of our former Mike Mertinger board members loved buffers with evergreens.
Yes.
Is there any thought on any landscaping or maybe considering a wall on that tennis court area on the north side?
Yeah, what Greg Wilkie did is he put up a, I think it's five feet high, the white vinyl fence. But, but she's right, it's, it's there, and we're going to enhance whatever's there.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a thought.
Okay. Any, seeing any more from public? Any more questions? Seeing none, motion to close public?
So move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, any more comments or questions from the staff? Okay.
Mr. Hyboll, as you are well aware, since at times you are here more than some of the board members, and have heard the board admonish applicants before, I think, it might behoove you with some of the neighbors who have appeared tonight for the informal.
Yes.
It may be some conversations with them prior to any site plan application.
Absolutely.
Might go a long way to resolve their problems and yours.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
There is no business, Mr. Chairman, on the March, from March 24th, so the appropriate item would be for the board to cancel the March 24th business meeting.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
First time he says it's all right, Bob. All right, roll call. I act on the important items.
Yes.
Ms. Julie.
Yes.
Ms. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. Wagner.
Yes.
Ms. DeBrenner.
Yes.
Ms. Spars.
Yes.
Ms. Duffrulie.
Yes.
Ms. Seppino-Sarachi.
Yes.
Ms. Duffrulie.
Yes. We all, we all just say, no, we don't have to. I, I will, I will fill in for Mr. Maskey on this issue. We believe we will have an application for April the 7th. If members of the board are not going to be available, we need to know in advance, so we make sure we have a quorum, we understand it's sort of the end of the, the in-between holiday season, which might prompt people to sort of go away.
Anyone plan on not being here for April 7th? Give you a minute to check your calendars. I will be here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you have anything you want to say?
Just a, a heads up to the board members, the next application that's in the pipeline, they just came in this past week, is, it's called Meadowbrook for Amwell Associates and Hobnanyan. It's the part two, if you will, phase two of the housing project behind the Amwell Commons project that was just approved. This is the back portion, it'd be 44 single-family units and 30 townhouse units. So they just entered within the last week, so it's in the pipeline within the next month or so, that will be on your agenda.
Okay.
I believe so.
I'll be in early, Chairman. All right, so after seeing no other business, we will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I'll speak on adjournment.